Yeah, Claire Mott.
Oh wow.
So they can see if alcohol or hydrogen.
Can you pop? Can you pop?
I don't think so. I think it's only water. Yeah.
Yeah, I probably stay awake. I probably pop or something. Or pot.
I think.
Pot or.
Yeah. Yeah, mine is clear.
Yes.
Which was ridiculous.
Don't do that before, before calculus.
Call the meeting to order. Roll call. McCarrigan, here. Scanlon, here. Caldwell.
Here.
Vidlac.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Join in. A pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Three, public information. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. It's above Tom. Four, notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than twenty-four hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. Do we have any changes?
No changes, your honor.
Okay. Five, citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency actions? All right. Six, closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if item, if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Seven, Scottsbluff Youth Council. No youth council. Eight, consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Solomon. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan. Yes. Nine, public hearings. Council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at six P M. For the rezone of lot one A Spangler subdivision, Scottsbluff County, commonly identified as eighty-seven-twenty County Road twenty-two from agricultural residential A R to R one, single-family residential. We'll open the public hearing.
I will be ready. Mayor and council, this is a rezone of the property up on County Road twenty-two. It's Catty Corner two Soccer Complex. They're requesting to rezone it to R one. You can see the neighbor to the east is zone R one already, so it will just be expansion. Right now it's A R, which has minimum lot size of five acres. It's six-eight the lot, and the property owner would like to subdivide it. So that's purpose of the rezone. It's in line with plan and plan commission and positive recommendation. Forward one on it.
Do we have any other questions or comments from anyone?
Zach, did they say how many they wanted to subdivide it into?
No, they didn't want to get the rezone done and then to see if it was even viable.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Close the public hearing. All right. Ten, resolution and ordinances. Council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance dealing with the rezone of lot one A Spangler subdivision from agricultural residential A R to R one, single-family residential. An ordinance dealing with zoning, amending section twenty-five dash one dash four by updating the official zoning district map to show that lot one A Spangler subdivision, a replat of lot one Spangler subdivision, a replat of lot one Hessler subdivision, and unplatted land situated in the north half of the southeast quarter of section eleven. Township twenty-two north, range fifty-five west of the sixth principal meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, currently zoned as agricultural residential A R, will now be included in single-family residential R dash one, repealing prior section twenty-five dash one dash four, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form. Do we have any questions or comments? All right. Move on to B. Council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance to declare an immediate action and emergency waiver of bidding requirements to replace a water main on Sixth Avenue and Park Lane Road.
Thank you, mayor and council. I've asked our esteemed city engineer to be here tonight because we received a report from him after they had repaired a water main at this location and they dug up several feet of the water main and found it was in a very, very poor state of repair. They're worried about the freeze thaw cycle at this time of the year and are concerned about there being several more incidences of this this main leaking. Apparently, once the repair was made, they could still see the, the main leaking at several other spots as it went down the line. So, got an email from Dave and asked, we haven't done an emergency item for quite a while, thank God. And usually it's where an intersection has been damaged and it needed to be repaired immediately. But in this particular instance, with the proclamation on this ordinance, we're waiving essentially the right, we're waiving the bidding requirements and the advertising requirements because the engineer wanted to get the plans to the state of Nebraska as soon as possible to get their approval so that we could begin the repair. So it'll still take, what do you think, Dave, seven to ten days before we even?
Yeah, right now we're planning on having bids, proposals accepted on Monday.
This Monday coming? So, they're still gonna solicit proposals from contractors. We're just not gonna advertise for the bids and this, this ordinance allows us to do so.
Do you know how much of the water main will have to be replaced?
The plans we're expecting to replace them from Twenty-seventh Street to Park Lane.
Okay.
So it's, it's the pipe itself was all put in at the same time, so we would expect the, you know, the condition of that existing might be similar throughout that whole.
Okay.
Okay.
And you would consider waiving additional readings?
Well, there is no readings if, we'll have Kim read it this one time. She won't read the emergency proclamation unless you really want to, Kim.
No, thank you.
But there's a proclamation on the back of it and if more than three-quarter, at least three-quarter of you vote for it, then it'll become immediately enforceable. So we won't have to waive the three readings on this.
Okay.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, declaring a public emergency resulting from a pressing necessity and unforeseen need requiring immediate action and waiving bidding requirements for a public works project for the replacement of the water main under Sixth Avenue and Park Lane Road, providing for the passage and approval of an emergency ordinance and publication shall be in pamphlet form. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Caldwell. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Call the roll, please. Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Okay. C, council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance repealing six dash six dash ten point five regarding stormwater permit fees and amending twenty-four dash three dash seven to remove the reference to stormwater fees.
Mayor and council, this is repeal of the stormwater permit fees. We did an analysis. We were the only city in Goodnight that was charging for this. We're recommending repealing them and then just amending twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-seven to move the reference to the fee. And request a waiver of the three readings, so we can go ahead and quit charging people for this.
How much is that fee, Zach?
For residential projects, it's a hundred dollars. For commercial, it's four hundred dollars. So we've had instances where stormwater permit fee costs more than the permit itself.
Wow, okay. All right. Kim?
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, repealing a section of the Scottsbluff Municipal Code at six dash six dash ten point five dealing with stormwater pollution prevention permits and amending section twenty-four dash three dash seven dealing with application fees, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Okay.
And we'd like to waive the three readings.
All right. Do we have a motion to waive the three readings?
Move to, move to waive the three readings.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Scanlon. Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, oh.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Solomon. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Vidlac.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
D, council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance for the proposed ordinance text, text change to chapter twenty-five, article five regarding off-street parking requirements.
I'd like to request a waiver of the third reading on this one as well.
Okay.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, amending chapter twenty-five, article five, section two of the Scottsbluff Municipal Code dealing with exceptions to the required number of parking stalls and providing evidence that fewer stalls are required, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
I'll move to waive the third reading.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. Do we have any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. McCarrigan.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll move to approve.
Do we have a second? I will second it. Any other questions, comments?
Are you just worried, is this just part of kind of cleaning up the ordinances?
Yes, unfortunately Zach has had a little too much time on his hands. And he's reviewing our, our code sections. We're getting ready to do a new comprehensive plan. So he's been taking a long look at a lot of the things that we have. And the parking in particular here was an old ordinance that we had done through development for a number of years that didn't give him discretion to approve a permit even if, you know, say somebody had three customer parking, you know? But our code would require twenty-five spots for the size of a lot. And this just gives him some discretion to approve a permit if less parking. They'd have, they have to come in and justify, you know, why they would not need twenty-five parking stalls, for example. But before, we'd still have to say sorry. You need twenty-five spots.
Zach, what is it based on before, size of the store?
So currently, we have a parting exception built into code, but it's only for wholesale warehouse and manufacturer uses. So this amendment is getting rid of it just for those three and widening it to any permitted use.
Okay.
And it just depends on the use, what the parking calculations would be.
And we have a situation right now where the developer is going to be required to have, provide forty-two parking spaces when they really don't need that many and they're gonna have thirty-five. So, it's a very reasonable, practical change in process.
Okay, call the roll, please. Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
E, council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance amending and correcting certain charges in chapter six, article six for solid waste collection fees at sections twenty-four and twenty-seven of the municipal code. Kim?
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff amending and correcting certain charges in chapter six, article six for solid waste collection fees at section twenty-four dealing with institutional, business, commercial, and industrial establishments and solid waste required containers at construction sites and section twenty-seven dealing with special collections and additional containers, repealing prior provisions of the municipal code, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
We're gonna ask such to waive the third, third reading on this one as well. This is, this was an oversight when we went from monthly to, from bimonthly to monthly. This wasn't adjusted for that, so it was just staff oversight, so we're cleaning that up. So we're actually charging these fees now, so.
Okay.
I'll move to waive the third reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Solomon. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
F, council to consider, oh, I need to approve the ordinance, sorry. Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Vidlac. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
F, council to consider action on the third reading of the ordinance repealing thirteen dash one dash one dealing with concealed weapons and twenty-two dash two dash thirty-three dealing with a deaf child playing sign on Avenue F.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, repealing sections of the Scottsbluff Municipal Code at thirteen dash one dash one dealing with concealed weapons and section twenty-two dash two dash one thirty-three dealing with a deaf child playing sign on Avenue F, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Caldwell, second by Vidlac. Any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please. Vidlac.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
All right. Eleven, petitions, communications, and public input. A, mayor to read the proclamation signifying forty years of Thanksgiving in the Valley. All right. Thanksgiving in the Valley proclamation. Whereas the first Thanksgiving in the Valley was held on November twenty-second, nineteen eighty-four and was known as Thanksgiving on the Mayflower. And whereas one of the first locations was Mayflower Moving Company on West Twenty-seventh Street, which was coordinated by Rich Berry of K N E B Radio and later by Kevin Mooney and Kendra Feather, also of K N E B. Whereas in those forty years, volunteers have served tens of thousands of residents of the Valley a Thanksgiving dinner both at the Guadalupe Center and delivery to homes. Now therefore, I, Jeanie McCarrigan, as mayor of the city of Scottsbluff, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three as Thanksgiving in the Valley Day in honor of the many volunteers and businesses who have worked tirelessly for forty years to make sure all have a Thanksgiving dinner to enjoy on this blessed holiday. Thank you for all you've done.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, guys. Forty years.
Yeah, it's impressive.
It's a long time.
Probably one of the most longstanding community service projects, I think.
Yeah.
And so, and it makes me feel a little bit.
That's all right.
I have to do a whole lot of it.
How many meals, Kevin, do you, do you guys?
Um, yeah, close to a thousand.
Wow.
Six hundred are delivered out, four hundred in, between people picking them up or eating in the center. Oh, and we get that, you know, eating in the center as much as they did.
Yeah.
But we figured together like, like thirty-two thousand meals have been served.
Wow.
Wow.
That's impressive.
Do you have a large enough army of volunteers?
Oh, yeah, we usually do every year.
Yeah.
I, I called Kevin wanting to volunteer one time and got to him now.
I just told him, I said, well, you can come. I'll see if I can find something for you.
That's impressive.
Yeah, it is. Very cool. Thank you.
Yeah, good job.
We're very thankful with Guadalupe, so to be able to have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just everybody is involved. We're very thankful.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks Mark for letting the bridge open.
Oh, yeah. You're welcome.
That's cool.
I'll make sure I notice that on my way home.
Did ya? That's pretty nice.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. B, council to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for B D S three C L L C D B A Flyover Brewery to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the Very Merry Christmas Market on December second, two thousand twenty-three, from ten A M to five P M at the Eighteenth Street Plaza.
Good evening, council, and this is mayor. Flyovers requesting a S D L to serve our spiked eggnog and spiked hot cider during the Christmas market on Saturday, December the second. All of our, I've been here before, so you guys probably know the spiel, but we have three staff will be working our offsite event. All of our offsite staff are trained in B TIPS. We will not be serving wine, although it does say all three. I always check all three just to be safe. We always do a little bit of padding, so ten A M to five P M, but the event is eleven A M to four P M.
Okay. All right. Check IDs, all of them?
Yes, we do. We have respanes. They will respan. And I believe the market will have gates up and we usually supply our own signs that say no alcohol beyond this point.
And you did this last year, too?
Yeah.
No issues?
Yeah, last year, I think it was on the street. But this year, we're not on the plaza now.
Okay.
Yeah, because the plaza was under construction last year.
Which will be a little bit better. I found last year, I had to, my son got in a car accident, so I had to leave the market and I fell and cut my knee open. I had to go to the hospital and get some. This year, when we're in the plaza, we're good, but I'm gonna staple it.
Fingers crossed.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Solomon. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. McCarrigan.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
C, council to discuss and consider action on a community festival permit for the Downtown Christmas Parade, two thousand twenty-three, on Broadway, sponsored by the Downtown Scottsbluff Association on November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, from four to eight P M, including street closure, vendors, and noise permit.
That's me. And it's the Christmas parade as usual. No major changes planned. It'll be a lineup at Bluffs Middle School Parking Lot up north and then headed down Broadway to about Fourteenth. And then people turn off there and are free to go their separate ways. We'll have food vendors in the plaza and we'll probably have some caroling on the sidewalk and things like that. And we're always grateful for the police department with their help in blocking off streets and keeping intersections safe. So, no changes from previous years.
All right.
The Grinch will be there again?
Yes, the Grinch and Santa and probably some involvement from Airlink, the helicopter that flew them in last year. So they're excited to fly again.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Vidlac. Any other questions? Call the roll, please. Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
D, council to receive an update on the online permitting portal.
Zach's really good at this.
He's getting pretty good.
Also, sorry.
Taylor, if you could have made it, he would be presenting. Taylor really oversaw the implementation of this project. I did a lot of work on it. So this is the online permitting portal. So it provides the public and contractors and everyone with the alternate to coming into City Hall or mailing a copy. Well, I have to log in. So the various permits are on there. We have the rezone subdivision building permits, the big one, running permit as well. As of two P M today, we've had two hundred and twenty-four permits on here.
Great.
And it's a good way of tracking the various permits as well. Some permits are on here, too, for six. We are working on an online payment processor. That'll be this fiscal year. We've got it in the budget. We're gonna lock, full launch on November seventh tomorrow. But this has been kind of a soft launch since late September.
So payments weren't taken previously online until now, then?
Yeah, and currently not yet either, but that is the intention to have that. So right now, either over the phone or coming to City Hall to pay.
Okay, well, that's nice.
Until tomorrow? Oh, no.
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 Payment's gonna be later in the, in the project.
Oh, okay.
Online.
Well, announced the launch tomorrow.
Okay.
That's nice.
Any major hiccups with the online permitting portal or anything you're hearing from folks?
We've heard mostly good things and got fewer people coming to City Hall since they can do it. The river's really enjoyed it and then with that hailstorm, it's worked out pretty nicely. You know, typical hiccups when you go live something new, but we're getting it all sorted out and it's.
Great.
That's nice. Good job. All right. I bet you're E, council to receive an update on the redesigned city website.
Yep, so Shariah and I worked with Revise to get the website updated. Main changes are really gonna be to the homepage here. As you can see, we've changed the color scheme a little bit. Got more rotating pictures, added some accents. We really wanted to add more buttons to the homepage. The old website really did not have much to do on the homepage, so. And we'll be adding more as we create more. The calendar was completely redid instead of the old month with all thirty days. There's just the upcoming meetings. There's a place for two news events here. We just haven't had one yet. And then Community Council there will take you to leave the chamber. They're providing that. And then we redid the top a little bit. Before it was government. Yeah, we, it's different. Utilities is a new one. That way, that's what we get a lot of calls about at the same hall, so we wanted to make it easier for people to check on the F A Qs and whether recycling and trash tip and whatnot. But we're very happy with it.
Looks very nice.
Yeah, it looks nice.
It's nice.
Where will the recordings for the council meetings be at?
We will have to put that here on the city council, over here. We already got it built in there, so.
Great. And you have a translate button in the top corner there?
So the translate button is a little more defined. And then another big one is the accessibility button where you can change.
Oh, wow.
That and whatnot. That, and whatnot, I can play around with all of it, so. Yeah.
Neat.
Pretty nice.
It looks good.
John, thank you.
Pretty, pretty friendly in an app feature, or do?
Yes, it's much more friendly than the previous version, it's, this is mobile-friendly instead of HTML or something.
Cool.
Familiar with the terminal.
Good, thanks.
Good job, Zach.
Thank you.
All right, twelve, bids and awards. A, council to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for the construction of paving District Number Three One Four to Eric Riker Insulation and Construction in the amount of four hundred and one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-nine cents.
And good evening, and we did receive, um, four bids, and those bid tabs are there for your review. Um, Eric Riker was the low bid. Uh, after going through all the numbers and all four, uh, we found no discrepancies. Um, and so we would recommend that Eric Riker be awarded that bid. And that's twenty-eighth off Avenue I and that piece of K that ties into twenty-ninth by.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, any questions?
No. And we've done work with them before and everything.
Uh, they're doing our Twentieth Street now, the, the computer.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no issues with that.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Nice.
I'll move to award the bid.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Solomon, any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Solomon?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
Thirteen, reports from staff boards and commissions, A, council to discuss and consider action on the agreement with MC Shaft and Associates, Inc. for construction, engineering, inspection services for sanitary sewer District Number One Six Seven, located north of Twenty-seventh Street and west of Avenue I.
And that is, uh, the sanitary was, uh, you were awarded that a meeting ago to Infinity Construction, and this is for MC Shaft now to do the, the oversight of that sanitary sewer line. And we'd recommend that they be awarded that contract to oversee that.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I'll move to approve thirteen A.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Colwell, any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Scanlon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
B, council to discuss and consider action on the agreement with MC Shaft and Associates, Inc. for construction, engineering, inspection services for paving District Number Three One Four for portions of Twenty-Eighth Street and Avenue K.
And now that you approved that bid, um, this would be for the, uh, construction oversight. There's two different, there's preliminary, which we do first, and then there's the construction oversight, so you've done, approved the preliminary, um, when they did the documents to go to bid, now we need to build these projects, and so I'd recommend that, uh, MC Shaft be awarded that as well.
Okay.
And this would be for the paving oversight.
Dave, the testing of cement, do you guys do that here?
We do, it's all, uh, yeah, we're, we feel like doing that as part of our project on the engineering side is a little bit more fair and equitable for the city, in that if we put it in the contract, the contractor's responsibility, then we would kind of work for two people.
Oh, yeah.
So we, we just have always historically included surveying and construction, uh, material testing as part of our.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jean.
Oh, I'll second it. Motion by Colwell, second by McCarrigan, any other questions, comments? Call the roll, please, Vidlac?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
C, council to discuss and consider action on approving the renewal of an agreement with Johnson Corrosion Engineering for contin- continuing the Water Tower Corrosion Control Service Program, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
And it is time, uh, to renew the agreement, if you're so inclined with Johnson Control. Uh, the great outfit, they come in, um, twice a year, they're from Arizona. They inspect our water towers, uh, we're doing the, the high school tower now, it's been great, and they'll inspect that. Uh, do a great job, the price increased a little bit, um, which is minimal, they're from Arizona, so to make that trip here, um, it increased a thousand, two hundred and fifteen, uh, but we recommend doing a three-year contract, keep them on board, so that they can keep doing our body protection force and facility.
How long have we used it?
Years.
Years and years, okay. And how often?
Be another three years.
Do we, do each tower once a year, or?
They'll come in twice a year, but yes, they'll do a tower once a year. And those are listed on their, uh, on the back of your sheet, when they'll come in and do the towers.
Okay.
So one tower's done, that tower is done once every five years, so.
Once every five?
Yeah, we have five towers. In five years' time, they'll each be inspected.
Okay.
Any other questions?
To approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Colwell, any other questions, comments?
Thanks.
Call the roll, please.
Colwell?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Fourteen, council reports, informational only, this item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members and meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Do you have any updates?
I've got one for the zoo. So I met with, uh, Desiree Davidson, maybe about a week ago. So, they have a zoo mentor that's been assigned to him from AZA, um, which is what they requested, so they can continue the process. And the mentor is the senior president of life science at Denver Zoo, and he'll be coming up here soon, or already has come and visited, and then he'll be coming out throughout the year to help her with the process. Um, last week, on November second, they had a USDA surprise inspection, and they passed with flying colors, there were no issues. Um, there's no issues found with the animals or the care of the animals, and so everything went well. And then she said, just to let people know, despite rumors in the community, the Riverside Zoo is fully insured, everything's covered. So there's no insurance issues, all the insurance is active and, and up to date. Um, young professionals donated, of course, nine thousand dollars, so they're happy with that. Um, and then they applied for fifteen thousand dollars in guarantee keynote funds, and if they can at least get part of that, they're going to try and get that mountain lion cage done. It's been sitting kind of exposed, open for months, so they're going to try and get that wrapped up. Um, it's kind of expensive because they have to bring in the team of welders, and they have to weld all the panels back on, so. Uh, Scottsbluff National Monument donated, uh, enclosed golf cart for them. Um, it's got like a little truck bed in the back and stuff, so anyway, it's, it's theirs to use, all the National Park Service decals are off and ready to go. Uh, Regional West donated, um, they had that large wood birdcage, it was down by the X-ray area, and so that's now at the zoo, and they put it to use, there's a boa constrictor in it now. Which probably won't work for the hospital, but it's perfect for the zoo, and so it's in the education area at the main building. And then staffing wise, they're trying to, you know, maintain the staff they have, they don't want any turnover, so they've promoted, uh, one of the keepers to head zookeeper, and another's been promoted to assistant keeper. But they're just trying to stay in that checklist with AZA, so being compliant with everything. Um, and then improvements, they've had some community donations, so they've got the welding done on the bobcat enclosure and the fox one. And so it's all done, the inside of the fox area is now probably triple the space in the inside area for it, and it's got more areas to get off the, the ground. And then, all the cages are now been winterized, so everything's ready for the animals for the winter, and they can go in and out when it's cold, except for the primates, and all the primates have to stay indoors, if it's under forty-five degrees, they gotta stay inside. And so, the last part, they've got some new education animals for school groups, uh, some different snakes, a whip scorpion, um, a tarantula, and then they've got a snake that's from Kenya, so, uh, that should be interesting. And they've got a nice education area in that main building, so that actually works well. November eleventh, for upcoming events, they've got a pajama party this coming weekend for Smokey the Bear. He kind of goes into sort of like a hibernation stage, it's not full hibernation, um, so they're going to have a party. Smokey gets a lot of food for his send-off, which he'll be happy, and then all the kids will have a meal, and they'll play games and stuff, so that should be fun. And then he'll dig a den, and he kind of goes down and takes a nap for a while, so. Uh, November eleventh is Veterans Day, and so all veterans can go to the zoo for free on, uh, the Saturday. And then finally, in December, they're going to bring back the Wild Lights Event, and it'll be Friday and Saturday nights. So, there you go.
Any other update? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Colwell, call the roll, please.
Scanlon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.